Glad allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the physical with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, council next, we have roll call. Okay, please start voting. Holly?
All councilors present, with Mayor Lucero previously requesting to be excused, an acquorum has been declared.
Thank you, Holly. Council, I would like to thank you very much for allowing me to step in on behalf of Mayor Lucero, who's out of town this week, so as Mayor Pro Tem, I will be residing over the meeting tonight, and thank you so very much. Next on the, we have the agenda approval. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
There is not.
If not, I will accept a motion to approve the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented, excusing the mayor.
I second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Are there any discussions? Okay, if not, we will start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Holly. Next on the agenda, we have citizens' comments. Alamosa City Council welcomes your comments. Citizens wishing to speak may obtain and complete a speaker card through the city clerk at the start of the meeting. So far, it looks like I only have one card, Holly. Mr. Jim Poston? Okay, if you could, come up here and state your name and your address for us, please. Just have to hit the button right there. There you go. Good job.
Okay, thank you. I'm Jim Poston. I'm from Montevista, Colorado. I'm a volunteer with the Locomotive 169 Boots Group, we're calling ourselves. And several months ago, I talked with the council about what our plans were, the things that we accomplished, and now we've got an update for what our plans are for the summer. The updates are that we have applied for a grant from the Alamosa Marketing District. There seem to be some things dynamic that are going on with that, but we did receive a $1,000 grant from the Marketing District last year. Also in the works are a grant to the Sangre de Cristo Heritage Organization. This will be the first time, so we're looking forward to the opportunities that present itself there. As far as our summer plans go, we have one-week sessions set up for the month of May, the month of June, and the month of July. Specific dates are May 9th through the 13th, June 6th through June 10th, and July 11th through July 15th. And of special importance during these volunteer weeks is an out-of-state organization called Historic Railway Preservation. They are excellent with locomotives, woodworking. The best thing we can do is help them unload their truck and then get out of their way. Those guys have done a great job with the present work in 2015, and they are looking to be available the week of May 9th, so we're looking forward to having them there. So again, first Saturday of every month, we've got the pavilion open, we've got the volunteer weeks, and everybody within the sound of my voice and beyond is welcome to attend. We'll give you the nickel tour of the Locomotive 169 that I understand a lot of people grew up on, played around when it was available for display. She's fortunately under security now, but we do have access. We do have the keys to the kingdom. So if there's any questions from the council, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Are there any questions? Councilman Grego?
No, no questions, but just a couple of comments. We really appreciate how you guys have taken that and really have made it. As people come over that bridge, it just sticks out like a, it really stops you in a sense, you know, so you've done a really great job maintaining it and stuff.
Thank you.
We really appreciate that, as council and as the community also.
Thank you.
Mr. Poston, thank you so very much, and we appreciate all the work that you and your team do for the locomotive in the area. We appreciate everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Consent Calendar A. The Consent Calendar allows multiple actions with one motion. Consent Calendar A contains routine items which have been recommended for action by staff or advisory boards. Council may remove a consent calendar item for separate consideration. Sure, one second, Councilman Vehil. Tonight, we have the approval of the minutes from March 2nd, 2016. We're going to receive the February 2016 monthly report, receive February 2016 expenditure report, and appoint Cesar Mejia to the Recreation Advisory Board. Okay, Councilman Vehil?
Thank you. Mr. Coleman, if there's no discussion, I move that we approve Consent Calendar A.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any discussions?
I just have a question for staff, since I was not here on March 2nd. Do I abstain from that part of the minutes? Or from approving the minutes?
No, you can vote on that. You've had a chance to take a look at it.
I did. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we can start voting. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Holly. Next on the agenda, we have regular business. Tonight, we're fortunate to have a presentation from Adam State University President, Dr. Beverly McClure.
Thank you very much, Mayor Pro Tem and councilors, for having me here today. I really appreciate the time just to come and update you on the university and what's happening there. Want to start off, I know today you're going to hear about the economic impact report that Counselor Hensley has put together for the university, and I think is looking at putting together for more than that for the valley. But just to give you an update, Adam State University has a $78 million impact on the valley. We have an 100, almost $112 million impact on the state of Colorado. To put that in perspective, when I presented to the Joint Budget Committee at the legislature about our budget, for every $1 that's invested in us, we give an 11.5% return to the state of Colorado. That's a pretty darn good investment, and we're proud of that. We employ 808 employees, and from that, using the multiplier, we create another 347 jobs in the valley. So I guess I would just really want to point out just the importance of that and the importance of the university to the valley and the valley to the university. And I also want to thank you for your partnership, because really now with all of us and the limited resources that we're facing, it's really about partnerships. And I really want to commend you on your city manager. She is always looking for ways for us to partner, everything from if you were going out to bid on concrete, whether the university can go on that, to be able to save money, to parking spaces on Richardson, which those of you that associate with university know parking spaces are like gold. So we really appreciate that, and we appreciate the outreach, and we appreciate the support. I do want to come and talk about a few issues and things that are going on with the university. First of all, you probably have read in the paper that the Higher Learning Commission has chosen to put the university on probation. The first thing I want to tell you is that the university and all of our programs, all of them without exception, are accredited. It doesn't affect a student's coursework, it does not affect a student's transfer. They, all institutions will still receive Adam State University credit, those degrees are still accredited, and we're very proud of that, and we're proud of the academic excellence. We are pushing back on that decision. We believe that it is a little bit of an overreach. Just as a reminder to you, in 2014, the university was named in the Chronicle of Education in an article about some athletes that were, some of our courses being used for out-of-state athletes. And I want to emphasize that, because none of our athletes and none of our coaches were involved in this, in fact, no one at Adam State University was involved. So after that happened with our online courses, the Colorado Commission on Higher Education came in and found no findings. They found it to be an isolated event, found that Adam State University had taken the appropriate actions to address those events. We hired an independent consultant to come in to also say, is there anything more that we can do? When the Higher Learning Commission came in, they found that we had indeed addressed all of the issues, and during their visit in September, identified four additional issues, three of which were taken care of. But because, one, they did not tell us about until spring classes had started, we said, we're not going to go back and impact those students early enrolled in the courses. And so at the end of this semester, that moving forward, that issue will also be taken care of. So you can see why we're pushing back on this, because all of our courses, even though it's a very limited amount of our online courses, were impacted, the Higher Learning Commission has chosen to put us on probation. We're confident that that will be overturned. We have a visit coming up in April 2017, so if the board before that of the Higher Learning Commission does not reverse that decision, we're confident that we'll meet and exceed, and that's very important, all of the expectations. What I've said so far is that they won't take yes for an answer. They ask us to do some things, we say yes, we do those things, they won't take that for an answer. But I will tell you that Adam State University, the Board of Trustees, the faculty, staff are committed to making sure that this university is viable and that that decision is reversed. On another note, just to give you, remind you about our guaranteed tuition policy. That is something that is, I think, going to be a great impact, in that any, any student entering with us, their tuition is frozen for four years. They will not see an increase in that tuition. And even though there'll be an increase for tuition with new classes coming in, any new class coming in, any person transferring in will see that that tuition is guaranteed through their fourth year. We think that's going to help make higher education more affordable. It's also going to help the university. We have scholarship programs. It'll help us budget those scholarships more and be able to really think about the impact of that. Just as a reminder to you too about the impact that Adam State has on the state and on the valley, we have the highest percentage of low-income students enrolled in the university than any other university in the state, and we also have the most diverse student population. We are a Hispanic-serving institution, and 39.4% of our incoming class were Hispanic, one of the largest groups that we've ever had before. So we're working to increase that outreach. You probably know that Western University is introducing and probably will pass legislation this session to raise their admission standards, and really will try to seek to serve a different population. I've had folks come to me and say, well, for Adam State University, that's a business opportunity. And I say, no, it's actually not an opportunity, it's a responsibility. Because we will be the university in southern Colorado that will serve that population and continue to serve those. So we are working- Thought maybe that just was in my head, but. We're working hard on partnerships, and we've been meeting regularly with the superintendents of the K-12 schools in the valley. One of the things that we do in the valley that I really appreciate is we don't point fingers. We try to partner and we try to solve the problems. The average GPA of our valley high school students is 3.1, but about 48% of them need remediation. And that's not their fault, and it's not the superintendent's fault. It's hard for us to recruit and retain teachers, qualified teachers, in the classroom. So we're looking at partnerships with all of the districts in the valley and look at ways that we can deliver high-quality concurrent enrollment. And if we do this partnership correctly, we, what our hope is, is that when a student walks across that stage for their high school graduation, that they either have their two-year degree from us or at least very close to that two-year degree, and that really gives them a head start on their college education. We've got summer programs for the general education, and we're really reaching out to high school students to say, come do concurrent enrollment and get a jumpstart on your general education competencies. It's a win-win situation. We get a better-prepared student, but they also get a jumpstart on that, and when they transfer in with us, can be a sophomore or a junior, and really be further ahead. So if we're looking at teacher education, back to that, and we can connect and fast-track some of our high school students into teacher education, think how much faster we can grow our own. Because I really do believe that's what we're going to have to do, especially for teachers. If you're from the valley, you probably have a tendency to be more committed and be willing to stay here. So we're really looking at how we can do that outreach and how we can grow our own. We'll also tell you that our ASU 2020 Plan, which was recently adopted by the board, goal number five is for community outreach, and one of the things the university is saying is that the campus isn't just at Edgemont and Richardson, it really is the valley, it's really all of Alamosa. And we really want to work not just to prepare a workforce, but to help prepare jobs for that workforce. And so we're partnering with different, with different, your city, with the county, with other economic development agencies, looking at the private sector partnerships, particularly looking at value-added ag and the healthcare sector. And so that's again where the partnership between the city and between the university, I think, is something that will strengthen us all, and we're really proud of that. So moving forward, we're hoping to see an increase in enrollment as well as retention. We've got a lot of great things going on at the university. We want you to know that we're a resource here. Beyond just educating the students here, we do have other resources and other outreach that we can do, including things like economic impact studies. In fact, just to continue to brag on our students, they just completed a marketing study for the university, and I went and heard a presentation on that, and was very impressed with the professionalism of our students. And I think it speaks well to the quality of education that someone can get from Adam State University. You can get a global experience with a local touch, and so we really are very, very happy about that. What I'd like to do, if, can I entertain questions? Not sure. Is if there's things you would like me to address or that you would like to hear more about, I really would like this to be your opportunity to ask any of those questions or have me address additional things you'd like to hear about.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Daniels?
Dr. McClure, I just want to say thank you so much for your energy and your passion. I know that the university had their rally yesterday and appreciated that. Is there anything that we as city council or things in our community, other community members, you would like us to be able to support the university in ways that we could do that for you?
And thank you, Counselor Daniel, for that question. And so one of the things I think is to remain positive, and when you're asked those questions, remember that we are accredited, to remember that we are moving forward. Do we have challenges? Absolutely. Do all of the organizations and entities in the valley have challenges? Yes, we do. And that we're willing to partner and to work together to meet those challenges, that the board's committed, that I'm committed, and in all honesty, the challenges have actually made us grow stronger. And I think that makes us realize that we may have to work harder, but that's all right, because everyone at that university is committed to doing that.
Counselor Grego?
I didn't have questions, I just a couple of comments. Dr. McClure, first, thank you for coming to update us at our chambers. You know, we've had a strong, strong working relationship with Adam State College and the trustees, and also Trinidad State Junior College. Those are two institutions that really have kind of put us on the map, and we continue to support them in any way we can, and I appreciate Chris asking if we could do anything else to better and better that. Also, I'd like to also point out that the Lieutenant Governor slash Secretary of Education is strongly in support of Adam State University, and I appreciate that he came and made those comments, and we'll get over it, you know, this is one bump that I think will survive it. So thank you very much for coming, and we'll continue having this working relationship with both yourselves and the trustee.
And Counselor Grego, I appreciate those comments, and when you mentioned Trinidad, I would just like to mention that we've strengthened our partnership with them as well. We have articulation agreements for course, for degrees that before were considered to be non-transfer. So if you're getting your cosmetology degree, your welding certificate, we want you to know what it would look like to come to Adam State University and get your degree. And we think that will help really encourage students to continue on, because especially if you want to run your own business, it's going to take skills beyond just the vocational aspect of that. So we're really excited to be rolling that out this fall as well, and they've been a great partner.
Counsel Stefano?
Ms. McClure, I just want to thank you also for the hard work that you're doing. This is an institution in the San Luis Valley that cannot be shoved aside or anything like that. I think that you will see light at the end of the tunnel. I think all this will just fade out, just like everything else. So I just want to commend you, and just hang in there, it's going to work out.
Well, thank you. I really appreciate that, Counselor, and know that the commitment from everyone at the university, I think reflects that as well, and that and that of our students. You know, our students are really, really incredible, and the fact that they were willing to participate in that rally and show their support really shows how valued this institution is.
Counselor Hensley?
So I also would like to echo what my colleagues have said. I also, I was proud to be actually part of that rally yesterday, and I'm also proud to be part of Adam State, and I'm so thankful that you were there as our leader. I think we're going to, I know we're going to get through all this, and a lot of it is because of you being there, so thank you.
Well, thank you.
Counselor Vehil?
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Dr. McClure, thank you for being here. I graduated from Adam State just four years ago, so I feel like I have a lot of very strong ties yet to the, to the university, and coming from Texas to out to Adam, Adam State in Alamosa, I just, I fell in love with it because of Adam State. And I think Adam State is one of the backbones of this valley, and you have our 100% support, and like everybody up here has said, this is just a small bump in the road. And with your leadership and what you've done in just a short time is amazing, and you've made some very tough decisions, and I really appreciate that. So whatever you need.
Thank you, Counselor Vehil, and just as a reminder, I too am a recovering Texan.
Dr. McClure, global experience with a local touch. I like that. Very good. You're most definitely reaching goal number five with the community outreach. I see you circulating throughout the community, reaching out and collaborating with all of the different schools throughout the valley and also all of the different businesses, and it really feels good to have a leader like you, because you're leading by example, and your students are going to see the walk that you walk, the talk that you talk, and they're going to want to follow in your footsteps. And I'm so glad to be a part of your team and working with the university whenever possible. I'm also a student at Adam State University, and they say knowledge is power, but I like to say applied knowledge is power. And you, your staff, and your entire team over there teach us, the students, how to use the knowledge that they need so that they can apply it in their career fields. So thank you so very much.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I appreciate that.
Any other comments, anyone? Thank you so very much. Right. Next on the agenda, we have regular business. Under regular business, we have business brought forth by city staff, public works, Excel Energy Lead Program Discussion. And we have Mr. Pat Steenberg.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, council. Last year, council asked about the possibility of converting the city's streetlights to LED. At that time, the discussion ended with the possibility of experimenting with some of our own privately metered fixtures, because Excel hadn't yet developed an LED tariff that would allow us to take advantage of the savings we would realize from the LED lights to pay back the investment. So recently, Excel has created this LED tariff, and they've started promoting a program that gives municipalities three options to participate. The first option is a being nothing. We choose not to, choose not to participate, and we just go on. Option B, option A, there, option A, is Excel pays for the installation of the LED lights and passes on a savings of about 4.5% to the municipality. And option B, the municipality pays for the installation of the LED fixtures and passes on a savings of 14%. So what that means to us is if we choose option A and let Excel install the LEDs, we would save about $4,400 a year, and if we choose option B, after a nine-year payback for the upfront investment, we would realize a savings of just almost $14,000 a year. That would allow us to reduce the electrical and gas, gas services line item in our street department budget by about 7%, allowing us to focus those monies on other things. After several discussions with Excel, staff consultation, and budget review, we recommend a phased approach to option B. This would allow us to maximize the potential long-term savings associated with the low-power consumption of the LED fixtures and fund the project over a period of three years from the general fund balance without negatively impacting that ten-year plan. This would require a budget amendment that staff would prepare and present later in the year, unless the project doesn't happen until 2017, at which point we could just simply budget for it. We, we would anticipate three annual phases of replacement, each costing in the neighborhood of about $45,000. This phased approach is recommended both to protect the general fund balance as well as alleviating many of the uncertainties associated with the data and estimates provided by Excel. We will be able to reevaluate the costs of our participation after the first year, and if those costs exceed what we've been led to believe, we can always revert to option A, where Excel pays for the installation. So we would just like to discuss that and get a recommendation from council this evening.
Thank you very much, Pat. Councilman Vehil?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Pat, how, how much longer does an LED light last over a sodium light?
Tens of thousands of hours, the bulb itself.
Thank you.
Counselor Daniel?
Pat, thank you so much for sharing this information with us and your forethought, and I had asked this question in the work session, but I think it's important for our community to hear. When we're talking about the contracts that we would be in with Excel, we can ask them to reevaluate our costs, and you've already put a letter in. So can you just talk a little bit about what you've already asked of Excel?
Sure. One of the things we did, we were asked to provide a letter of opinion to the Public Utilities Commission. In that letter, we requested that after the program has been established and has a, has a track record, that the PUC evaluate the true savings that Excel is seeing from the program, and any surplus savings on top of that being offered to the municipalities at that time be passed on to the end user. We also, if we do a phased approach, we would sign an agreement with Excel simply for each phase that we're entering, and that would allow us to, to evaluate our costs at the end of that phase and see how it's working.
Thank you. Counselor Grego?
Question and comment. First, according to this communication you passed out, we're looking at 437 lights?
Yes, that's Excel's estimate.
In your estimate earlier, you said that there's a little extra, there's more than that? I had heard the term-
I was, I was shooting from the hip. So we had, Excel has provided number 437.
So that's what they're looking at, and that's throughout the whole city grid?
Those are the lights that they, according to their records, that we have that are eligible for the program.
And also, if we choose option B and we purchase these lights, once we-
I'm sorry, we, we won't be purchasing the lights. They will still belong to Excel, but we will be paying Excel for the LED components to retrofit into the fixture.
Maybe that's what I wanted to say. Even though we're buying those components and kind of refitting those lights, they still belong to Excel.
They would still belong to Excel.
And finally, you're thinking of phasing this out in three phases and taking monies out of the general fund to pay for this eventually. My thought process is, as we see these, these savings, is there a way, and maybe the city manager is going to answer this, that we can probably take this as a loan and repay it back to the general fund as we see these, these savings and so forth?
Yeah, what we would do is talk to the finance manager and, and just figure out the, the procedure that makes the most sense financially. Whether we, whether we, whether we take those savings, I'm not sure how well we'll be able to track them exactly, because there will be so many different premise numbers, but we can either take those savings and apply them to the next year's program. You know, there's, there's a lot of different ways we could look at that, and I'd probably bow to her judgment as far as what makes most sense.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome, Councilman Grego. Councilman Stefano?
Pat, on these, if we decided to participate on a limited basis by choosing program option A, could we do this in one phase, maybe just one phase, and then evaluate it from there and see what the cost effectiveness would be on, are we going to save money or?
That would be completely up to Excel. The option A is they come in at their schedule, at their pleasure, and they change, they change the lights.
I guess staff's recommendation would be, is if, if council's interested in option A, that since Excel would be fronting the cost for it, they're- A, that since XL would be fronting the cost for it, there really would not be a need for us to phase it. And that 4.4, 4.1% is locked in. So there really wouldn't be anything to evaluate from a phasing structure. So if council wanted to entertain option A, it would, it would pretty much be, that's what we do for the whole community. The benefit to that is you get the whole community done at one time. The drawback is we will only see that 4% savings into the future.
Okay. Councilor Daniels?
I have another question for you, Pat. The recommendation that we talked about in the, in the work session was also starting with the southern end of our city first and then phasing it throughout because of the, you know, the concerns that the residents have. So I appreciate that consideration. And can you talk a little bit about the Clean Energy Collective conversation you had regarding the solar options potentially?
Sure. We've been approached by who is essentially a partner with XL called Clean Energy Collective. They, they build solar arrays and sell cities and private customers electricity at a reduced rate for buying into the solar array. There's been several cities up in the northern part of the state that have taken advantage of it. We have, I've had discussions with them this week, provided them all of the information they needed to get the numbers from XL. They need to provide us an estimate of our electricity costs if we were to go, if we were to go through them. So trying to, trying to figure out how the Clean Energy Collective program would work in conjunction with the LED program is, right now it's a little problematic, but we're working on it.
Councilor Grego?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome, sir.
It seemed like from the work session we had, we were kind of leaning towards option B. So how soon would you need an answer to start proceeding this or how soon would XL need some kind of direction?
They haven't given us a drop dead date. We would like to, we would like to get some input from you just simply if, if we do choose to go with option B. If you make that decision, we'd like to get in the queue and get, and get rolling so we can, we can get started as soon as we can.
You know, if, it's obviously council's prerogative, but if you would want to make a motion tonight directing us to inform them about option B and our phasing approach, that would definitely get this rolling and get us in the queue in case there are some other communities out there that are looking at something similar. But if council feels like it needs to digest this and postpone a decision, that we can bring it back on the next agenda as well.
And it seemed like from the discussion that, I know we can't make a decision on the session earlier, but it seemed like it was kind of leaning that way. So I didn't know which way council wanted to go, so.
Okay. Councilman Stefano?
I have a question, Pat. How old is the system that we have in place now with the sodium lights? Eventually, are these dinosaurs or will we eventually have to go to LED anyway in the future?
Oh, I think eventually, yeah. Whether, all of these different technologies are generational one, you know, in 30 years there'll be something replacing LED. So, you know, it's, right now, obviously, all of the parts are available. We can continue. Before, we had high-pressure sodium, we had mercury vapor. I can't, we can't even buy a mercury vapor bulb anymore. So, you know, at some point, that'll, it'll, the universe will phase that out.
Councilor V. Hill?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome, sir.
As, as we heard in the work session from Mr. Pat, that a lot of, this is, this is becoming the new thing and all towns and cities are going towards this. And I think this is a great opportunity that we have for us to get in the queue, as Heather said. And I believe it's imperative on us to give staff direction. I think this is pretty cut and dry. What our city has done under our direction a little bit with, with green energy and recycling and the glass crusher, I think this all falls in line with that. And I just think this is a great opportunity and I think we should go ahead.
Thank you, Councilor V. Hill. Councilor Grego?
Well, if, if we don't have any further questions, and I, I think Mr. V. Hill was kind of leaning to making the motion that we give staff direction to look at option B and find the funding and how we're gonna place the funding and, and start working with XL. Because as our city manager says, people will, if these are available to other communities pursuing, you're gonna have a crowd of people there. So if we, if we can pursue it this way sooner, the better. So I'll make that motion.
I second. We have a motion and a second. Are there any discussions? Okay. Start voting. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Holly. Thank you, councilors. Next on the item, agenda item, we have an eligibility hearing for Zenitran annexation. Pat?
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
As we've discussed before, this property is a portion of an enclave lying generally south of West 8th Street and west of Vacated Center Avenue in the Washington addition. The owners are requesting annexation as they plan to begin marketing the property for sale and believe the annexation will make the parcel more appealing to potential buyers. The property is served by a paved street to the north, water is available, sanitary sewer is available to the eastern portion of the property. However, service to the western portion has been evaluated and depending on the needs of the developer, may be impossible to provide without an owner-financed sewer line extension.
Okay.
And again, the property meets all requirements, all state requirements for eligibility.
Okay, Councilman Grego?
You caught me ahead of time there. I had some comments with our city manager earlier today and I still, the enclave part of it, Pat, why wasn't that, why, why didn't we go that direction in a sense? And I know that we were looking at the time, trying to save the applicant time. Plus, I think if that was the route, that would also saved him money on top of that.
Well, council, council has to initiate the unilateral annexation. This, this annexation was initiated by the applicant. By the time council expressed an interest in unilateral annexation, Eric and I researched the time, the timelines and it would not have saved them any time at all.
I was just trying to get a clear understanding.
Yeah, there's just, it had gone, it had gone far enough that we couldn't, we couldn't save any time. The unilateral annexation, all it, all it cuts out of the process is the, basically the petition and application phase.
And in the future, are we still gonna pursue that enclave? Because if this, if this parcel comes in, there's two other parcels that are still in this little island out there that is surrounded pretty much by city.
Well, like I said, that, that would have to be initiated by council.
Sure.
I will say, we continue to have discussions with the property owners in order to explain annexation, see if they're interested and to reach out to see if they would do the voluntary or sign off, as Pat discussed, on a, in a letter or something that says they're amenable to unilateral annexation.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions of Pat from council? So I believe at this time, I can open this up for a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak for or against this project? If so, please come up to the podium, state your name and your address. No one? Okay, so I'll bring it back to council. Councilman Grego? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Stefano?
I say we approve Resolution 4-2016, property to be eligible for annexation.
We, we have a first, I mean, we have a motion and a second. Are there any discussion?
I will, before the motion, I was gonna say that I'm glad to see that one person is trying to bring, trying to help correct that enclave. Because we've got a lot of small islands throughout our community that are surrounded by, by city. And I know years back, we were trying to correct a bunch of them and it finally got away from it. But I think this will help us and hopefully the other two individuals that own properties there will see that this is coming in and will probably work with the city to try to come into the city also. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Grego. We have a motion and a second. Okay? Please start voting. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much, Holly. Okay? Next on the agenda, we have Parks and Rec Direction on Downtown Banners presented by Hines. Thank you, Hines.
Good evening, councilors. During your March 2nd council meeting, Jamie Greeman, who's the executive director for the Alamosa Convention Visitors Bureau, did a presentation on their intent to do, intent on doing banners downtown. They have a funding for about 30 of them at about $200 apiece, so they've allocated about $6,000 for this project. At that time, the councilors directed staff to take a look at whether, to meet with them to see whether we can go ahead and participate in this project. And as you said, there's a Google Earth mapping. I met with Jamie. And just to give you kind of a legend, the red ones are the 30 that the convention center is proposing. We went through and looked at the blue ones that initially were the city ones that we're looking at. And then we took it a step further and was looking at the cross streets and those are the green ones to better fill in the banners throughout the entire downtown section. The white banners, Jamie and I agreed that they're too close to each other to another banner pole, so those would not have banners on them. And then later on, we're looking further to on 6th Street. There's 15 yellow ones that could possibly be a phase two.
I believe from a staff perspective, you know, Hines and Jamie had a very good conversation trying to make sure we have the proper coverage. You can see with some of these blue ones, we're able to extend that, that visual appeal further down the block. We don't have the right light poles on this extension right here in order to do the banners, although, you know, obviously as people are entering the community from the east, it would be very nice to have that visual appeal. For me personally, these cross streets, I feel are fairly important from a visual pedestrian perspective. We want to connect the two one-ways and have people feel more comfortable walking between those two blocks. And so having something like very similar banners and streetscape can, can help with that pedestrian activity.
Yes, and then the light poles that we're talking about are what I would call vintage, like the old-style light poles. They're not the big XL light poles. So those are all the light poles in the downtown area that are the miniature variety. And as Jamie said at her presentation, that we're looking at primarily doing, you know, they're doing the Sand Dunes National Park 100th Year Celebration. But also in the future, we could use all these banners for other events that come up, early iron, Summer Fest, or any ice festival, just a welcome to the city of Alamosa. And they're all on board on that. And talking with Jamie, my crews be putting, taking, putting up and taking down the banners and we would initially have the control of what goes up and what, what doesn't. So at this time, and talking with the city manager, we were looking at probably, we would be able to do 22 additional ones and those are the blues and greens in the main downtown section there. And that would cost $4,400. Talking with Heather, we're looking at taking that out of non-departmental, out of economic development.
And we had earmarked some funds out of economic development. Some of it we use for our outside funding for our economic development partners. Some of it we use for other economic development projects. There is about an estimated $19,000 in the budget that was not encumbered or earmarked in case there was a project that came up. So this $4,000 definitely falls within that $19,000.
Okay, Councilman Grego?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome, sir.
First, I want to thank staff for this approach. I, I felt that this was a good idea and it was a form of economic development when they came to give this presentation. And secondly, I was able to meet with some businesses on State Street from 6th Street all the way over to 8th Street. And they felt that their part, there's, the businesses there, they felt that they're, they're part of the downtown businesses. And they also pointed out the fact that the airport and entrance into our community, also as people come into our airport, they drive down State Street. And this would also kind of give that addition of, of businesses from, from 8th Street all the way back down to, to the downtown area. And I don't know if, if there's lights available where we can put some of these on there. And I don't know, Hines, how many more, how many more flags we're looking at or?
Sure. Yeah, as Heather alluded to, you know, beginning from about, what is that, Hunt to Denver, I mean, the light poles aren't up above on Main Street right there, you know? And basically also from about, is it Edison where Big Johns is, further west, there's no vintage poles. So we're looking at a totally different structure to, to put those banners on. Because, you know, we're kind of, right now, we're kind of narrowing our, the cost, whatever, down to certain poles that we know we can get, we know what the price is. But I'm thinking, you know, I know they want to put some stuff by the airport, but they're gonna have to develop some kind of lighting or different banner structure to be able to put those banners up.
What about the, from 6th Street all the way down to 8th Street where those businesses? You've got Alta Fields there, you've got the Green Spot, you've got a potential food market there, you have a beautician, Lopez Beauty Shop there. There's about, I think, five or six businesses in that area.
And like I said, it's doable. I mean, you can put banners on any kind of poles, but it's also part of the, the XL poles, you know, we don't own. And, you know, we're still in, I guess, negotiations or trying to get an agreement with them to put up our holiday decorations. I mean, that's been a two or three-year process now and we still haven't heard back from that. It's the same thing, we put our Christmas decorations on some, on some of those poles.
So I think in short, it's a different pole. So for this type of program that we're looking at here, it's, it's different types of brackets. It's not our poles for us to be able to do it, so we don't even have permission for that. And then I would recommend it probably needs a little bit of a bigger discussion other than a decision tonight for something like that. Because the area it's confined to right now is the central business district as designed in our zoning and in our land use area. I know from talking to some merchants in that area, they sometimes feel a little left out or, you know, those types of things. But I think we have to be careful with wayfinding and, and the visual connection that we are creating. And so I'm not saying it's not something we shouldn't look at for the future, but from a pedestrian perspective and those types of things, you, you are getting into a different area of where you're having them walk.
Right, it's a different area, but those businesses exist and they've existed for a lot of years. And you're exactly right, they feel left out and the first thing that comes out of their mouth is we pay sales tax also. We gather sales tax for the city. And this is an entrance into our community and I, I kind of agree with them, you know? There, if we, if there's a way that we can find how to put those up, Hines, I would encourage council to support something like this because it, you know, this, these are businesses that exist and, and it seems like they're getting cut out of the downtown so-called business area. They're part of the downtown area also.
So it's whatever plan you approved that created the central business district. And then I guess the other discussion we would need to have is for those businesses located on 160 Going West. And is that it, is that something we need to provide banners for? Is it different banners? What kind of support do we provide to some of the businesses as we had further west as well?
And as you say, we've approved a central business district. I, I still, there's been confusion there of what is considered the, the business district? Because just like you say, you drive, you drive down 160, all those businesses there, you know, and you come in over the bridge and you start the businesses there. So I think they're all, it's all one big, big part of, of the downtown area that needs to be addressed. So I, I'm just talking for these people that quits or in my area anyway. And I feel that they're being left out and if we can do something, please, I would like some support on that.
Councilor Daniels?
Councilor Grego, I can appreciate the, the concern about the, the businesses. And so, and my question was related to phase two, Hines. When this was presented, are they, are we? When this was presented, are they, are we looking at that being a city cost for Phase Two, or is the, the, the group looking at paying for Phase Two?
We're not sure. Part of why we wanted to have it be a Phase Two is when you, you get to this part of the drive, there's a different dynamic that's going on. Part of it is when you're doing banners, they're announcing something, they're sometimes used as gateways, those types of things. And so we feel like there needs to be more thought put into this as far as the destination that we're announcing. And so that's part of, uh, the update to the comp plan is to take a look at, you know, should we have a gateway for the downtown, and where should that be, and what does it look like? What's the gateway into the city as a whole? Where should that be? What does that look like? And have there be some common threads, so we're not disjointed and, and, and we don't have the right brand and those types of things. So very well could be that something from a, a beautification perspective is some of those gateways, which would include then doing maybe different type of signage, maybe banners, something, um, along this area, um, heading east and, and west. And, you know, again, you've got two eighty-five, which is, you know, often used as an entrance, and then, um, the, the State Street in regards to the airport and the connectivity there. So what we've got to do is evaluate it more from the type of users who are using those routes, what we're building from an expectation and that we can meet that expectation, because if we build something up and we're not meeting it, then we're leaving a negative feeling for them.
So thank, thank you for that clarification, Heather. And, and so I think to support the concerns that Counselor Griege brought up, as they're, they're real even with the zoning of the Central Business District, um, when we look at Phase Two, because I think Phase One makes, makes total sense to me, when we look at Phase Two, I would like to expand it beyond the yellow pins, whatever those are.
Thank you. Counselor Hensley?
As I said, uh, at the last meeting, I think this is a fantastic idea, this is a great way to market Alamosa. I look at this as ongoing, uh, with the marketing board having set this up, and then us growing with it, and all of the different types of banners we can have, uh, showing different events, sharing things with everybody who drives through, hopefully having people that would drive through Alamosa to stop. So I think it's just a great marketing tool. I also agree with you, Counselor Griege and Daniels, that idea of Phase Two is definitely, I say, let's see how this goes, and let's really grow with it, and then at the same time, then really look at Phase Two. And I agree with you, expanding on State Street, expanding on all those different areas.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. Uh, Counselor, Counselor Stefano?
Uh, Mr. Griege, I have a question for you. How far down State Street would you propose to do this? Uh, just to Potencios Market and from there forward to Main?
Yes, uh, you've got all those businesses in that area, you've got about five businesses. And if you further go down, and you still have a couple more businesses down there, you've got a Funeral Home, you've got a, uh, what's the other one there that, uh, does all the latework with? Vans Machine Shop. You've got a liquor store out there, you've got a liquor store. So I, I appreciate the fact that you, in Phase Two, maybe that needs to be addressed, to address. And the, the gateways into our city, we have four of them, I believe, uh, you know, uh, coming in over the bridge, coming in from Ana Vista, coming in from La Jara, and our airport. You know, those are, those are, people are coming into our community, and we need to address those gateways in some way, so to show them that, you know, so.
So that would include two eighty-five, probably?
Eventually, and like, uh, Counselor Daniels was talking about Phase Two, so, thank you.
Are there any other questions for, uh, Heinz, anyone?
And just to let you know on that, because, you know, because we do the holiday decorations every year, I do have all those poles that we use for holidays, so we can go look at that at Phase Two and see where those poles are at. Those, most of those poles are gonna be wooden poles, uh, down State Street, so it'll take some kind of band, uh, attachment system that, that we use for the, similar to what we use for the holiday decorations. So it'll be different, totally different than what we would use in the downtown area.
Well, I appreciate you looking at that.
Thank you, Heinz. Counselor Stefano?
And I think, uh, I, I'm, like, uh, Ms. Hensley said, I was in favor of, uh, anything that can bring, uh, tourism to the city is helpful. So, uh, could we, uh, go ahead and, um, direct this to, uh, do we recommend to open this to go ahead with our first phase tonight?
Yeah, the, the request is for whether councilors are in favor of doing, spending forty-four hundred dollars for the twenty-two additional banners and taking it out of the economic development, out of the non-departmental.
Counselor Daniels, I believe you have a question?
No, I, I was hoping to make a, a motion to the effect of, um, contributing forty-four hundred dollars toward the project to add twenty-two more banners and give staff the direction to move forward.
Can I have a motion?
A second.
And a second? Are there any discussions?
I would just like to add, um, thank you for working, uh, with the Marketing District as well, I like the collaboration, and I think as a team, it's going to make our entire city, uh, a lot more appealing when people walk through, and, I mean, walk and drive through, and, um, help them to be more informed about the events that are going on in our city, and that is greatly appreciated. I also just wanted to add a note in regards to expanding our, expanding our, um, Business District, I encourage everyone in the community to participate in our comp planning, uh, sessions that we have, because that's gonna be very important in determining what the city looks like in the future, and, and how far and how wide, um, our Central Business District is going to be. And at this particular time, the citizens of Alamosa have the control and the power to make their voices heard, so I encourage that. So we have a motion, and we have a second. Start voting, please.
Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Holly.
Thank you, councilors.
Thank you, Heinz. Okay, next on the agenda, under City Manager Legal, we have a presentation on the Economic Impact, uh, presented by one of our councilors, uh, Counselor Hensley. And also Jake Heaton.
So, um, I would say probably about six months ago to eight months ago in our discussions with the university about potential partnership areas, um, was right around the time that, that Liz was working on some different formulas to measure the impact of the athletics for ASU, um, and, and look at some of those numbers. And at that point in time, we discussed, it may have even been longer.
It's been a while now.
Um, we looked at, is that if that was something we could potentially use as well from a city perspective. When we get these different requests and, and, um, the different projects coming forward, the impact on the community is, could sometimes be somewhat of a guessing game. If you, you have the UAV, which may have certain number of jobs that pay a certain amount, um, compared to the ball fields, which are gonna be more maybe the seasonal and, and, and part-time jobs compared to, though, the visitors that the ball fields would pull in compared to the UAV may not pull in that many visitors. So trying to get our hands around how to objectively look at these different projects and measure that became a priority for the city. During those discussions, um, Dr. Hensley was, um, elected to be on council, so we had to make sure to do a very transparent process. We did have a bid, um, and she was the low bidder, and her and Jake since then have worked on pulling together what we call an, an economic impact formula. And I'll turn that over to you guys now.
Thank you, Heather. Thank you for having us here tonight. So like Heather had said, um, we were approached by the city to develop a formula to measure the economic impact for current and potential businesses. So we wanted to look at what the businesses here, what their economic impact is, as well as if businesses were moving here, what their impact, impact would be. So like Heather had mentioned, um, we both worked on two different studies for Adam State. The first study, we looked at the athletics and how much of an impact it had on Adam State as a school, and then also how much of an impact it had on the entire community. And then it went into the second project, which was the entire university, and that's like, um, President McClure talked to, about earlier, it had a seventy-eight million dollar impact that was from that, that study. So when we were doing these, we saw a couple similarities that kept coming up, and were able to sort of reconfigure what we had worked on before and come up with this formula. We looked at different areas that, um, kept coming up, such as employee spending, how much of their spending takes place locally, as well as, um, events and visitors, how much their spending is here in Alamosa. Operational expenses in the valley, how much of their operational expenses take place locally. Healthcare impact, and then taxes, and then we took all these different areas and sort of combined them into the formula. So from that, we wanted to make it so it's something that can be used by anyone, that we can make it sort of user-friendly, easy, where you just plug in numbers. So what we did is we, we sort of formatted it where you just ask questions, where most businesses will have the answers to. We put the numbers in, and then it'll generate a spread, in a spreadsheet, the overall economic impact. All of the formulas are hidden on a separate spreadsheet where we go through, and you put the numbers in, all of the formulas take place behind the scenes with proven multipliers, and the formulas take place on another sheet, so you just plug the numbers in. What we did is the first business we looked at was the railroads, we looked at the passenger train. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna walk you through the process of how we put the numbers in, and sort of maybe give you a better understanding of how this formula works. So, thank you.
So what's gonna happen is, uh, once Jake's, Jake gets seated, is I will talk about each number, but again, those formulas are in there, um, and so it's a real easy plug type situation, so where it doesn't take much time at all. So the first thing we did is, so again, we are using the railroad passenger train, and so number of employees, there's two things that you have to look at here, you have to look at the salaries and the impact the salaries and the money that's coming into Alamosa has, but also the number of employees, just that number alone has an impact as well. So we'll talk at the end, when we look at the totals, how the two different impacts are. But the first thing is, the total number of employees that the railroad has for the passenger side is forty-three. The way you get that forty-three is they actually have one of their main hubs for, uh, reservations here in Alamosa. And it is tied together with the passenger train. If for any reason that passenger train ever left here, they would take the reservation part of it with, with the train, because it is somewhat connected. Go into the next spot, and it's a total paid for salaries. And so when you look at that, um, under number three, is there are seven of the employees that make a salary of fifty thousand a year. Continuing down is you have four employees that are hourly, they are full-time, but they are hourly at nineteen dollars an hour. So forty hours a week with fifty-two weeks. And so that goes through that. Obviously, if they had other types of employees, we have a few more spots, you know, because different businesses are different that way. What we're gonna put, so let me, before I go into the miscellaneous expenses, if you look at the total paid salaries, it is at five hundred and eight thousand right now, that obviously is all the internal calculations from the numbers we put in. On the other employees, the ones that are not part of the eleven employees, those are different hourly rates, and so it was easier to actually look at what the total pay was in the year versus trying to calculate all the different rates. So that number, when you put that in, was four hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred and six, point four zero. So we just manually put that in, so it comes up to a total salary in the year for nine hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred and eighty-six, point four oh. And so again, those are the salaries for, uh, the different employees. So when you go to the next section, what really comes down to is then looking at the event visitor breakdown. And again, if you see we have Event One, Event Two, you can have as many events as you want, we could have break, broken this down as far as all of the different concerts the train goes on, but again, we wanted to make this somewhat simplistic to just show you how easy this is. So for twenty fifteen, there was eleven thousand and five, uh, guests on the train, uh, people that rode the train. And of that eleven thousand and five, when you look at it, the average day spent in Alamosa is one point five, and the average is one night. Now, there are people that just came to ride the train and didn't spend the night, but there were also many who stayed more than one night to do the sand dunes and other events as well. So this was a very conservative average. If you scroll down, uh, because the train actually gets every single address, it was very easy to calculate that seventy percent of the train riders, the people that rode the train, seventy percent of them actually are from outside of the valley. So that was a pretty high number of obviously people who come into the valley to ride the train. We also figured, uh, from research is, again, a very conservative estimate, is that they spend an additional sixty dollars while they're here for t-shirts, sweatshirts, uh, obviously going to some of the local stores, buying jewelry, that type of thing. Again, a lot of people probably spend a lot more, but there's probably some that didn't spend anything as well, so very conservative average of sixty dollars. The interesting thing with this, uh, with the passenger train is that actually, any expenses they have for that, they actually charge it to their freight train. So they really have no operational expenses as far as how they run their business. The only expenses they have are the alcohol and food that they have on the train itself. Uh, they didn't have those numbers, uh, convenient when we were talking to them. It was pretty minimal, and if anything, it is gonna have a little additional economic impact on Alamosa, uh, because a lot of their alcohol that they get is actually from the brewery, um, or also other breweries throughout San Luis Valley. Uh, but again, they didn't have those numbers, but it was a pretty minimal number. But for, uh, other circumstances, if we use other businesses, obviously, we would incorporate those operational expenses, and then also look at what the local spending rate of those operational expenditures are. So for example, if you were gonna get construction or, um, having plumbers, things like that come in, are you using somebody local or are you not? So you would definitely look to see how much of that operational expenditure stays in City of Alamosa, and how, how much of it is not. So as we continue on and we go through that, uh, we now have, and other things that we do have, that we can have on here, it didn't affect the train, is obviously sales tax that comes into the city of Alamosa. The train being federal obviously doesn't have any sales tax, um, health benefits, if, uh, there are any, uh, insurance, things like that. Obviously, when people have, uh, have things that happen and they have to go to the hospitals, things like that, that's money that is also in the city of Alamosa. So now if we look at our total page?
Liz, one question before you move on. Did you look at the, uh, don't they run out of diesel, those trains?
As far as?
As far as purchasing diesel and stuff. Wouldn't that have come from locally?
I'll have to check on that, that he, um, when we spoke to Matt Abbey, that didn't come up, and so?
Cause they do run out of dies, they run off diesel, don't they?
And are you thinking that that is bought here and stuff?
Probably bought by, right across the street, right, right next to their neighbors?
So that's a great, that wasn't brought into that, and so we will follow up on that, and thank you. That wasn't brought up in our conversation, so that's a good point. So that could be an additional operational expense, that's, yep. Any other questions so far? Is it making sense? Okay, so now if we go to the totals page, so what you look at here, so again, we didn't put anything in for operational expenditures, um, and so then when you look at this, with the salaries, how we did this, uh, obviously, this number is smaller than what you saw on the first page, again, all those internal calculations, we take out a twenty-three point three percent for taxes, um, that is the average tax rate, and then seventy-five percent of the salaries is estimated to be spent in the city of Alamosa. All of these, you can see, have multipliers, and what the multipliers do is it's a bounce rate, it is a universally ex, ex, uh, accepted, uh, rate, and what that is, is when you spend money, is it doesn't, doesn't, doesn't just sit there, it actually gets respent and respent in the city, um, until there's nothing left. And so you have what they call multipliers. Then if you look at the events and visitors, uh, it calculated out to one point six million, and that was just the direct impact. So direct impact total was two point one, almost two point two million on the city of Alamosa for the year of twenty fifteen. If you look at it with the estimated impact after the multiplier, you're looking at three point six, almost three point seven million dollar impact that the passenger railroad had for the city of Alamosa in the year twenty fifteen, so pretty substantial impact. The other thing that we look at is the total employees, and with the total employees, back to where I was telling you that that has an impact as well, just like President McClure had said about our employees and how many jobs that creates for the city of Alamosa, the same thing for the railroad. So them having forty-three employees for every two employees, that creates another job in the city. So you now have twenty-one and a half jobs that have been created by the railroad, uh, on top of what they already have, so that's more money that is coming in, that is being spent in the, in the city as well. Uh, but again, I think that's, what's nice about this is, as you can see, we pl-. Uh, but again, I think that's, what's nice about this is, as you can see, we plugged through that fairly quickly, and it's not where we have to recalculate every single time. It's plugging in those numbers and getting some pretty quick calculations as far as that impact. Any questions?
Thank you so much. Any questions for, uh, Dr. Hensley? Comments? Okay, um, Councilman Vehill.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome, sir.
Just a, just a quick shout-out to Mr. Heaton and Dr. Hensley, this is awesome. This is a great tool that we could use. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Daniels.
Yeah, I, I just wanna say, wow. Um, so I was happy to be a part of the conversation you had with Mr. Abbey at the railroad, and that you got this out of that conversation is, um, amazing, um, a, a, and wonderful, wonderful work. So, um, again, thank you, as Counselor Vehill said, you guys did a really great job, and it's simple. I feel like this would be applicable to many businesses and easy to, to plug and play, so thank you.
Councilman Vehill.
Thank you, Mayor. So, a question I guess for staff would be this, is if we were to approve this and, uh, go ahead with this, would, would you use this for businesses in town?
So, the excitement we have for this is, we wanted it to be applicable to very different things. So, obviously, you know, a lot of people, when you're getting a new business and if they're asking for help, now we'll know what their actual impact is gonna be and we can compare those. But I think, you know, what we've been trying to make clear from an economic development perspective is it's not just about attraction, it's about retention. So, having a strong understanding of what existing businesses provide, being able to put more objective information to it, other than just if you like the business or not and they've got a good reputation, this makes it more objective. And if you have a business that wants to expand and maybe do two more jobs, this helps us better measure what that impact's gonna be. But then the other one is on some of these events, and we don't necessarily give a lot to events, but, um, Dr. Hensley and Jake have presented to the marketing board, this is a tool that they could use as well when they're trying to evaluate where they give some of their funds, um, to support the different events and, and see what the return is for those investments. And I think one of the interesting dynamics that, that we ran, or I can't say we, they ran, was, um, they looked at two different years of the difference of funding that was provided to the Passenger Rail for marketing, um, through the marketing board, and I think it was what, fourteen thousand dollar difference? And that enhanced marketing, we could quantify what that, what that netted in additional visitors and additional revenue, and I think it approached about four million, is that...
So yeah, it was, so the difference between 2014 and 2015, um, the impact was a to, so it was, uh, fourteen thousand passengers in 2014 versus eleven thousand in 2015. And so it was an impact of four, almost four point five million. So the difference in that economic impact between the two years was just over seven hundred thousand dollars.
So that, that kind of information to know the value of those assistance dollars that are being provided, to make sure from an accountability perspective, that we are seeing the results and, and those types of things. I know, you know, the rodeo has asked us several years in a row for assistance, so this is something we could run the numbers from the rodeo through, or the barbecue, or, you know, some of those things. So we wanted it to be something that we could apply and just have more objective information, not just if we think it's a well-run event.
Counselor Gregel.
I too wanna echo, uh, Counselor's comments on how, a great job you guys have done on this, and, and it is a good tool, and another part of it, and it just had a clarity and, and transparency. Uh, I know you got paid, or somebody got paid two thousand dollars for this, and maybe this is a question for our counselor. This project started prior to you coming here?
So, so what happened is, we were discussing this, and then I ran for election, and so then we wanted this to go the proper channels, and so this was put up for bid and advertised as a bid, correct? Yes.
My question was for our counselor, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt your conversation, but, uh, when this was, when this was being put together, at a, a point of transparency, you know, because we have a city councilman that's getting paid X number of dollars to do a study, and in the past, there's been, because of this conflict of interest that's out there, I just want some clarification so the, the community doesn't say, well, why are counselors getting paid above the four hundred dollars they make a month to do this stuff?
So when we, when we realized that Liz was on council, um, what we did is a competitive process. I did check with our city attorney to make sure that the process we were doing was transparent and provided the, the best information and, and protection should Liz have been the low bidder. And once the bids were received, um, I'd have to check the communication real fast. I believe we received, um, four bids, and, um, Liz, your bid was for one thousand?
For two thousand.
Two thousand, and the next high, lowest one was, I believe, six thousand. So there is a dramatic difference between the bids.
No, and I, and I, and great job, and, and just trying to keep you also out of trouble too, if there's some trouble out there, you know?
Well, no, so that's why I'm providing that information.
In the past, they've brought this conflict of interest, it's, it's started from, from the feds, down to the state, now into local, you know, and it's, it's, it rears its ugly head up, and if somebody gets in trouble because they're taking more money than they're supposedly, and I don't know if our counselor has any comments on that, but, you know, no, it's a great job, there's nothing against you, but just trying to protect you also because...
No, and I, and honestly, things I've done for the community and stuff, a lot of it I do at no charge, and then if there is a charge, I really do it as, at a very minimal to, to just cover some of the basic expenses. Um, and I do it bec, in that sense of sort of that combination of really giving back and like say, not too oft, you know, I don't, a lot, there's a lot of things I do for the community that I don't charge anything for.
No, this price is very, very cheap.
Okay.
But ju, just for the simple, you know, for the simple, you know, because people will read this in, in the paper, and the city councilman got paid two thousand dollars to do this. And oh, it's very cheap for the hard work that you guys put into this, but just to keep, try to keep it straight. Thank you, Counselor.
Can I just add one thing? I was thinking about what you said, Charlie, about the diesel, and I, I could be wrong, but I think why that didn't come up is because none of the expenses for the passenger train, they don't separate it out, and they put it all to the freight. And so that's why I think he didn't count any of that, because he charges all of that to his freight side of it. And so I think that's why that didn't come up.
Eric, did you have anything that you need to add to that by any chance?
No, I think Heather explained the transparency very well.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, I would like to make, are you finished?
I was just gonna say, I really wanna thank Jake. He has been great, um, he's obviously a student of mine, and we have done three projects together now, and he's just like, done a fantastic job, and on this really took the lead. Uh, you know, we worked together, but he really did the excel side of this, and so really proud of what he's done.
I just wanted to say thank you, that this has been a great opportunity for me to learn, and so, working with Professor Hensley has been great, and just wanna thank her for her work on this too.
Jake, I wanna thank you too. I see your work throughout the valley. I, I saw another one of your presentations at the, uh, San Luis Valley Tourism Conference when you got up there and gave a presentation, you and Dr. Hensley. What I like about the work that you're doing is that other organizations, in addition to ours, can tap into some of the, uh, programs that you've created. This was amazing, because you made it simple. You plugged in real numbers and we got real results back. That is amazing. I really appreciate it. Dr. Hensley, it just shows what kinda talent, creative talent we have on council, creative talent we have at the university, uh, creative talent, and Jake being an intern student, it's, it's amazing. I want people to see that we have creative and talented people here in the valley, so that more people would wanna come and stay in Alamosa and throughout the valley, so that we can continue to grow and expand our great city. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Councilman Stefano.
I can't add too much to that, uh, Mr. Coleman, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Good job. And, uh, is this, uh, fully developed and ready for use now?
Yes, it is. We'll probably do just a couple little tweaks on it, but we're pretty much ready to hand this over.
Thank you.
Councilman Vehill.
Thank you, Mayor. If there's no further questions, I move that we approve the two thousand dollars.
We, we don't need any approval. This was more just to show you the results, the formula, and catch you up on the project. It was, um, one of those things that was within the spending level of the, the city manager, so we got it taken care of.
Counselor Daniels.
I, I just thought of a question, so, um, I apologize for that, but now that this, so i, is it ours to use, or...
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so what's gonna happen now is, it's definitely set up, I, I, we wanted to show you how simple it was to plug those numbers in. Um, so it is a formula. One of the other things is, um, in the last ten years, none of the multipliers or any of the calculation type stuff has really changed. So it's something that we also can pass on and show them how to look at those different things. Obviously, I'm still around, but something could always happen, uh, but that idea that, that it is easy to pass on and that it can be taken over and used over and over again.
Thank you all so very much. Appreciate it. Okay, next on the agenda, we have, uh, committee reports. Councilman Vehill.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome, sir.
On Monday, I went to the school board meeting, and the first forty minutes were presentations by, uh, Save the Children After School Program, and two seventh grade, uh, two middle school science classes, and they just presented the work that they're doing. It was, uh, really nice to see the kids and the work they're doing and producing, and it's a testament to the teachers in those buildings. Uh, also, another big highlight from that meeting was that they are, uh, if you can believe it or not, approving their schedule for next year, and it seems to be that they're gonna, they're gonna keep a very close schedule this year, uh, next year as they did for this, this past school year. And, uh, looking at the budgets, and as everybody is, there's, there's, the money's running low, so they're figuring out ways to, um, save money and utilize their money in better ways.
Thank you, Counselor Vehill. Councilman Stefano.
Um, on the neighborhood watching, um, a lot of people are complaining about the drugs in the, at City of Alamosa, and, uh, I would recommend, uh, that you all get involved. We're having meetings at the Baptist Church on State Street, and, uh, the newspaper will be announcing another date for a meeting, and I would like to get it, um, more people involved in this, uh, so we can make a difference in our community.
Thank you, Counselor Stefano. Are there any other committee reports? Counselor Hensley.
So I did go to the, uh, marketing board this last week, I think it was a week ago. It was, uh, one of their longer ones, dinner was included, uh, which we did have a very good dinner, but it was the, uh, meeting where they actually awarded the, or didn't yet award it, but listened to all of the presentations for, um, requesting certain amounts of money and things like that, and then some of the decisions were made. I don't know if those were announced yet, but that process. So that was my first marketing board meeting, so it was, it's always a good one to go to when they give away money.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. Are there any other committee reports? The good thing about committee reports is that the community gets to see that not only do, does council serve here during the week, we also serve throughout our community, uh, getting involved in many areas, and these committee reports are very helpful to let the community know as a whole, uh, how actively we're involved in the community, as well as what's going on in the community. So, so I wanna thank all of the counselors who, uh, participate on all these different various committees, because trust me, I know that you spend a lot of, uh, late-night hours burning the midnight oil, uh, but it's a great thing for our city. Okay, next up is staff announcements.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, looking at the calendar, just a few reminders, we are actually gonna let you have a Wednesday off next week, so you can, you can have a good time there.
Wow.
We, you are coming back though.
Awesome.
You are coming back, March thirtieth, for a work session. On the calendar, it shows as a work session for marijuana, um, and that still will be. We are looking at adding though, a second one to that night to discuss the ice rink. Um, we were very excited to receive word of the GOCO grant and the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand. If we combine that with the grant that we have secured through, um, DOLA with the mineral impact of two hundred, we're up to five hundred and fifty thousand with a goal of eight hundred. So, um, it was a very big announcement that we were excited about, um, and we just wanna take a look at what does that mean, um, do we need, what we need to look at moving forward, those types of things. So, we will be modifying that agenda to include a work session for the ice rink as well. The next item that is coming up, that if you could kinda think on, is the annual retreat we have coming May sixth and seventh. Um, I've been trying to keep a list of items that we've talked about maybe having at that retreat. If there's something you think you, you, we should cover, send it my way, um, even if it's something that we've talked about, feel free to send it in case I didn't catch that note and carry it over to the draft agenda. So I am, I am pulling that draft together, I wanted to have staff think about it a little bit as well, and then I can send that draft agenda for the retreat out, but get me your thoughts and I can work on including those. To catch staff up, or to catch council up a little bit, I was looking to see if the chief was here. Um, about, no, different chief. But thank you, chief. Dawn is, Dawn is not here. We just wanted to give you an update. About a year ago, we put our old ladder truck on a bid site. We initially listed it at about four, fifty-nine thousand. We didn't get any interest at all. We lowered that to forty-nine thousand, um, got a few questions, but really no serious, um, interest on that. It's been on there for a year. And so at this point, we looked at some of our partners here in the valley, and La Jara is showing some interest. Um, we are looking at allowing them to purchase that for twenty-five thousand. So it is, it is lower than what we had tried to get, but we really were not getting any interest at all on that bid site, and it's, it's an apparatus that, you know, best serves us to get it out to someone else who can use it. So, that is something we're moving forward on, on, of disposing of that equipment. The other thing I wanted to get on your, your radar is that staff is working with the animal shelter, county employees, and the vet. They are building a new office where we currently take our strays when we pick them up. Once that office is built, because of, um, the septic system and, and some issues with the well, they will not be able to continue using the animal shelter, which would have an impact for both the city and the county when we pick up strays. So, we're trying to evaluate every different option, if they're short-term, long-term, the different costs associated with those, um, and we'll probably be bringing more detailed information to council on that situation, but I didn't want you to hear anything out in the community and, and be surprised by that. It is something that we're grateful for the county's participation in those discussions as well. The other item I wanted to share with you is, we have a broadband meeting tomorrow. Um, the SLV COG had applied for a DOLA grant to do a valley-wide study for broadband, and they also got a USDA grant for a match, which then allowed for all of us to benefit from it and not have to provide funds. So, we're very grateful for their leadership on, on pulling this planning effort together. It's essentially through DOLA, and that's where a lot of the state funds to support broadband deployment is going through, and the planning process has, has to be taken very seriously, because if it's not done well, and if there's not projects showing up on that as a need, we may not be able to get funding for those projects as the next phase through DOLA. So, it's something from a city perspective, we're, we're, we feel is a very high priority in regards to economic development, we really need to make sure that we have broadband. And, so it's something that we will be participating in, and, and following closely, and, and it might be that staff has a recommendation that we have someone on the steering committee. All of that structure hasn't been set out yet, I'm hoping after tomorrow's meeting it will be. Along those lines, we also had a very positive lunch today with SLV REC, um, in regards to what their plans are for the valley and, and deploying fiber and, and their build-out. Um, it, it was a very positive meeting, and, and they very much wanna help serve the valley, and they see it the same way in regards to an economic development and, and trying to make the valley a stronger area for attracting business and retaining businesses. So, um, it was, it was a very pleasant meeting to find out what their plans are and how that might fit in with the deployment of more broadband in the valley. So, I think we have a few more staff updates. Chief, if you would like to come.
Thank you, Heather.
Good evening, Chief.
Just wanna, it, make you aware of a couple, or update you on a couple things. Um, we had a group approach the police department asking about security and, uh, the possibility of having a motorcycle rally in, in Alamosa, uh, on July ninth. They first was, uh, wanted to have this event over in St. Ives, they were gonna use the parking lot, the county parking lot, um, behind... They were gonna use the parking lot, the county parking lot, um, behind the St. Ives. That has since fallen through. Uh, I think they're talking with the Knights of Columbus now to have that event there. Um, if this event occurs, it could be a significant amount of people. They're estimating three to four hundred people, um, attending this rally, so we just wanted to put that on your radar for an event that's possibly coming up this summer. Um, the other thing I want to give you an update on is we did pick, pick up Dax, our new canine. The paper did an awesome article on the, the dog coming in. Um, I'm just waiting for, um, the training to be completed by both the dog and, um, the handler before I actually put something out, but I did want to let you know, we did pick up the dog. Um, he is here, and he seems to be so far an awesome dog, so wanted to give you that update.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Pat?
Just a quick FYI, uh, I'm sure you know, we, we signed an IGA with the county to use their tub grinder to grind, uh, some green waste down in the green waste pit. We were able to operate the machine for thirty hours and stay within my rental equipment budget based on the rates they charged us, and we got a lot of material taken care of. It was successful. Got a lot of country cleaned up down there, and, uh, the mulch is being offered for free. Uh, we have some piled up out at the recycle center out front where people can easily get to it, and, uh, we're looking for all the interest in the mulch we can get. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Pat. Looks like, uh, council, okay, I was, um, councilman.
I was just gonna thank Pat. Good job on cleaning up that mess, and, uh, chief, that's great on that dog, and thanks for the update.
Okay, Councilman Grealish.
Yes, I, I was, you said that, uh, the county charged us for the use of the equipment? How much of a charge did we get? Because, uh, years back, we were trying to, we, we tried to develop a, uh, partnership where if we have equipment and they can use it, vice versa, we should be able to lend equipment to each other. So you're saying that they charged us, and how much did they charge us?
Uh, I would have to look at the IGA. I believe it was, it was, it was just, just right about three hundred and thirty dollars an hour.
An hour?
Yes, sir. That included the tub grinder, two tandem dump trucks, and, uh, at least, I, they had two employees down there the whole time as well.
And I think, you know, in regards to the IGA, any hard costs that they had in relation to having to pay employees fuel, because it did go through quite a bit of fuel, um, I think we felt those were, were very much something we're responsible to cover, because we did not want them to have to be out any funds.
So those, those, there, that price is justifiable, then?
Uh, the, there's definitely hard costs wrapped into that, but they also did charge, um, an equipment rate, um, as well, which was, which was somewhat surprising, but it was, um, something that we still move forward and, and took advantage of the equipment.
Okay. Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, Pat. Okay. Um, Heinz, great job, you and your team. Five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We're getting closer to the eight hundred. I believe we're gonna make it happen. Good job. Chief, congratulations on Dex. Ruth, what a great article in the paper the other day. Really appreciate that. Thank you for letting the city know about the things that are going on here in council. Heather and Jim, I really want to thank you for taking the lead on the broadband plan by participating with SLV DRG and the COG. That's very crucial, because that's gonna allow us to make sure that there are no gaps in our infrastructure as we move forward, and I really thank you, because I know you are in multiple meetings over the past few weeks trying to iron out all the details, and, uh, I greatly appreciate that. Okay? Next on the, uh, agenda, if there are no other comments, um, we have, uh, local liquor licensing authority actions, uh, needs and desires hearing, change of location application by Eduardo and Jennifer Mises, DBA Ninos Del Sol LLC from six seventeen Sixth Street to three twenty-sixth Main Street. Okay? Please, I'm sorry, Masias.
Thank you.
I need to wear my glasses. I'm in denial of the bifocals. Sorry about that. Okay.
Hello.
Please, hi.
We are, we're pleased to be here tonight. My name is Jennifer Masias, and this is my husband Eduardo. We have run our family business, which is currently under the ownership of Priscilla Masias, for fifteen years. We are here tonight to request the transfer of the liquor license from our current location on Sixth Street to our new location on Main Street, as Eduardo and myself will be the new owners of Ninos at our new location. Right now, we are on track to be at our new location by mid-May. Eduardo has been on the current license as a general manager for the past fourteen years, and before that, at our Monovista location from nineteen ninety-seven until two thousand and one. We are requesting this transfer because we would like to continue to provide our customers with adult beverages as a complement to their food, and it would negatively impact our business to no longer be able to provide this. It would negatively impact us not only in alcohol sales, but our overall sales, as well as our customers may elect to go somewhere else to have this choice. As a small business owner, it is imperative to be able to provide this service in order for us to remain competitive. For the past fourteen years, our customers have grown accustomed to having this option. We take this responsibility very seriously by training our employees to enforce and comply with the requirements of holding a liquor license. Our training includes requiring employees to card anyone who appears to be younger than forty, identifying characteristics of a valid photo ID, and elevating any concerns immediately to management. We are confident in this process because we take this responsibility seriously by training our employees to take this seriously as well. In attendance tonight and in support of our request are a few of our customers, Scott and Kelly Veneman, James Billings, Tom Medina, and Joel Medina. Thank you all for being here tonight, and thank you for your support. Are there any questions before I move on to our patio request?
Thank you so very much. Uh, we're gonna have, uh, Eric say some things. Go ahead.
I was just gonna jump in and say you do need to open a public hearing for the needs and desires hearing.
Sure. I would like to open up a public hearing for the needs and desires hearing. Okay?
Is, excuse me, Mayor, I don't mean to interrupt you, but this is something that, uh, our councillor usually conducts, or?
I think we've, we've done it both ways. I've conducted them before, uh, or, or the mayor has conducted them. Um, this is not like a disciplinary hearing, which, which I definitely do, um, but I'm, I'm happy to do that if you want me to, or Mayor, you can, you can conduct it either way.
Well, it's up to the mayor.
I'll, I'll let you do this, if you don't mind. It's team.
Nope, not at all. Okay, so, good, you've opened it for a public comment, and, and we've had, uh, the background laid by the applicant, and if there's anybody wishing to speak, uh, to the needs and desires of the community for approval of this change of license, now would be your opportunity to do so, if you guys want to step down and free up those microphones. So, Mr. McCann, I see wants to do that. Please step forward, state your name and your address, and then your comments.
Dan McCann, E209 Sunset, Alamosa, Colorado. As someone who promotes small business, all they're doing here is changing locations. They've been in this business for a long time, and they're taking ownership of the business, and since we're not talking about anything illegal, uh, and as everybody knows, nobody served me a drink publicly in the state of Colorado. That's my business, and they need this, so let's continue what they've been doing, and, uh, they're a good young couple, and they're young people, and they're gonna be around here a long time. Keep them in business.
Thank you, Mr. McCann.
Hello, James Billings. First, I'd like to thank council for what you did for me last year with my property and the tower with the big corporation. You guys backed me up a hundred percent, and that's what they're asking for, too. Back us up a hundred percent. He's, uh, the Masias are putting up a building that's gonna be beautiful. It's, it's, it's gonna liven that corner, and what they're asking for is minimal to what they're gonna do for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Billings.
Tom Medina, fifty-three thirty-eight County Road, four point seven south, Alamosa, Colorado. I don't live in the city, but I do eat in the city. And I would like to say that I think it would be a great honor for this city council to continue supporting our local businesses with their endeavors in, in, uh, keeping up with their license as far as providing beverages for their customer and outstanding food for their customers as well. So I would ask your support in supporting them and carrying out their mission. Thank you.
Anyone further wishing to speak to this application? Let me just, for the record, ask a couple of questions then of the clerk. I assume that this was posted, uh, pursuant to the requirements prior to this meeting night?
It was. It was. But she sent me a picture of it being posted, too.
Okay. And, um, there, were there any petitions circulated or anything like that? Did you circulate any petitions at the restaurant or anything like that? No? Well, I don't see anyone else wishing to speak to this matter, council, if you want to go ahead and close that public hearing.
Okay, at this time, uh, if no one else has anything else to say, we would like to, um, close the public hearing and, uh, return it back to, um, council. Councilman Stefano, you have a question?
I've known the Masiases for quite a while, and, uh, they've operated a good establishment right there on Sixth Street, and, uh, the prior owner of the restaurant that's about, that's in question to be open, had had a liquor license there, so, uh, I recommend that we approve this.
Councilman Daniels, I believe she had a question or a comment, and then councillor Hensley.
Thank you, council.
You're welcome.
Coleman. Um, first of all, congratulations on this becoming your business.
Thank you.
That is wonderful. Um, and I must look under forty, because I get carded all the time. So, um, thank you for training your staff, um, and ensuring that they're not serving underage and that they are, um, also making me feel really good about my gray hair. Um, and so we do appreciate the time and energy and the kind of training to ensure that we're not allowing, uh, people who shouldn't be, uh, consuming alcohol to do that. So I appreciate your commitment to that. So great job on it becoming your business, um, and good luck in your new location. So thank you for everything you do.
Councillor Hensley.
Well, I also, I've obviously have been there many times and really enjoy coming in there. It's a great establishment, and I know the new one is just gonna be that much better. So I also support that this transfer, it doesn't seem like it's anything different than just transferring it from one to the other, so definitely strongly support this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Grealish.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome, sir.
I too have had the opportunity to visit him at, on their, on Sixth Street, the businesses that they, that they have there, and they run a great, great business. The food is fresh, uh, and I don't believe that they've ever had a violation there with their prior license at all. So, and as councillor Stefano pointed out, uh, this, as far as the needs and desires, there has been, there was a license there at the building that they're moving into, so it already existed, and I think that was transferred. It, it might have been transferred now over to, uh, State Street. I'm not sure if it did, but, but there has been a business, a license in that area prior to that, so, thank you.
Can I, we, we did have a violation back in two thousand and two?
Yes.
Yes, and, um, the employee who did sell the, to the undercover was terminated immediately. It was in two thousand and two.
Thank you for stepping up and, and, uh, addressing that question, that concern. You're welcome. City attorney, do you need to say anything?
I just wanted to clarify something just for the record. The, um, application, as I understand it, is for the existing building, and then is there currently a patio there, or you're building a patio that you wanted?
We're in the process of, uh, building a pa, building a patio, and that'll be in, um, looked at April sixth, no, when is that?
In April, yeah. We're, um, in the process, um, with working our, with our contractor and the planning committee. Um, we're gonna build an outdoor patio on our new establishment, and so we're also asking, um, to be able to serve alcohol on our patio. And it's, it's going through the planning committee. They're reviewing it in April.
Right, one, but that won't come back before you as the liquor licensing authority as a separate issue. So what's going in front of the planning commission is the ability to have outdoor sales. What you need to consider tonight is whether it's appropriate to have liquor, um, out on the patio. So just, I wanted you to be aware of the fact that they are indeed asking, it's a somewhat of a change from what the configuration was at Trujillo's, because they will be having a patio, and I, I, I'm looking at the drawing, and I, I'm failing to figure out where it's going to be, so I'll ask you to explain that, too, just so the council's aware of that.
Okay. The patio will be located on the east side of the building. It will be, um, enclosed with a six-foot wall. It'll have a, um, it'll have appropriate signage and an emergency exit-only gate that will have an alarm on it. Um, there'll be raw iron on top of that wall, so, um, people can't get over it, and there will also be a twenty-four-hour surveillance camera on the, on the patio.
It's not in this sketch right here, though.
We gave her another sketch. It's right there.
Oh, yeah, there, there it is. Yeah.
So where, um, where the old business owners had the entrance, that will actually be the entrance to the patio. Our new entrance is on the east side, right there.
Okay.
So the gate on the patio is an emergency exit-only gate, so people won't be able to get out of there without an alarm going off, and there's also gonna be a camera on the patio.
Okay, uh, we have a comment by, uh, councillor Stefano, followed by a comment by Ms. Hensley.
I just want to reiterate that they, uh, they have a, an existing patio at their location now on Sixth Street, and, uh, this is a good location on, on the east side of this building. If you've been through there, it's on that side, uh, away from traffic. There's an alley in the back, so it's a perfect location for that patio, so, great idea.
Councillor Hensley.
The same thing. I just want to reiterate what councillor Stefano said is part of the ambiance of Ninos. I know in the summertime or when the weather's nice, I love sitting out on the patio, so I definitely think it's one of those parts of what Ninos is known for, so it's great that that could be transferred with it.
And Mr. and Mrs. Masias, I've had an opportunity to eat at your restaurant as well. The food is delicious, but more importantly, your staff is courteous and friendly, and, uh, I appreciate what you're doing, and I, I wish you much success as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor, I had a question for our councillor.
Sure, councillor, councillor Grealish.
I might, because you kinda got me confused here, so if a person was to make a motion, it would be in the sense of, we would be leaving out the patio part, or how, how does that work?
No, you would be including the patio, that, or at least you need, you could include the patio. The application is for including both, as, as the sketch is on the application, both the indoor dining and the patio. That's what they are requesting, and I just wanted to make sure that that was, that that was clear for you, because in the council communication, there was a comment about not accepting the application until they've gone through the planning commission, but we've accepted the application. It's before you, as is with the patio.
And is it proper to make, uh, a motion to approve it tonight, because I know that they're?
Yes, if the planning commission, for whatever reason, should determine that it's not appropriate to allow outdoor sales, then, then they can't use the patio for eating or drinking, but if the, if the planning commission, uh, goes ahead and approves that, then your action tonight would allow them to serve alcohol out there as well.
Well, then, if there's no further questions, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve this change of location, application for Eduardo and Jennifer Masias.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Holly.
Okay.
Thank you.
And we would, we would like to acknowledge what a wonderful community Alamosa has been to us. We have been fortunate that we're able to do what we love, which is to continue our family's tradition of running a small business while sharing our family's recipes with the best customers, and we look forward to many more years with this great community.
And if you, you guys are all welcome to any time to go take a tour of our new place. The doors are always o, open to see what we are doing there.
Thank you so very much. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it. Great presentation. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, council, and thank you, Eric, so very much for stepping in and helping out in that situation. That's what I like about this teamwork we have here. Appreciate it. All right. Up next on the agenda, we have council comments. Okay, Counselor Grego?
I'll start, I guess. I have several here. First, I was approached on, and this is probably in Heinz's department, about the watering of the grass and trees out by the airport, coming in from the airport. I know at one time we had a drip system out there. I don't know if, once we did that road again, it was... I think it was taken out or something. So... And I hate to put you in a position, but that was a comment. Are we watering the grass and the trees out there as we're coming?
You are correct. We had a drip system out there. When we worked on the road project, some of those lines were cut, but Heinz and I had talked that we need to get something put back out there so we can have water. Maybe not... We need water for the trees, but we probably don't want to go back in with grass from a conservation perspective, so maybe some other type of planting that's a lower use of water. Heinz, do we have that in the budget to do this year, or did we already fix that drip system?
Yes.
We have not fixed it yet, but it's definitely in the plan because we do not want any more damage to the trees.
So there is a plan to address that then?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. A second, it was brought up by several people. The train that comes through our community, and great presentation on the train, it seems that when it comes through, it blocks several entrances into our community, and they were concerned about the emergency part of it. And I know that if they're bringing stuff from Montavista, I've seen them block out there by Town and Country, over by Exile, all the way down here on two eighty-five, and almost all the way through, it's blocked, and it's blocked for easy twenty, twenty-five minutes or more. One time I clocked it, and it was over twenty-five minutes that that thing blocked it. And we're talking about a long train, and if there's an emergency, how do they handle this? That was brought to my attention, and I don't know if you know the answer, but I just... I'm directing the comments to you, and you can find an answer or maybe bring an answer to if something can be done or not.
We can discuss it from a staff perspective. I do know we received a complaint where we had an ambulance on one side at one point, so I'm not sure if this sparked potentially the comment. And the ambulance driver was obviously in communication with dispatch to know that it was not a life safety issue and that that inability to get across was not creating a life safety issue. But what we can talk about from a staff perspective is even from law enforcement, if we need to get across what the plan is. And Counselor, I don't know if you were getting ready to say something?
And city manager, in the past, what they've done is they have to move their trains, but they move them in sections, and apparently now who's ever moving these trains, they got to stretch from here to Montavista that they're pulling. And sometimes when you block those three entrances and you have an emergency coming in from the southern part of town, you're in trouble. So Counselor, would you maybe look into that and give us some kind of a direction or some kind of an idea? Finally, my last one here, and thank you, Mayor, is I want to thank Public Works for all the... They're trying to fix a lot of potholes through the wintertime, but we have a large, large pothole at the end of Pike's Peak and First Street, and I've hit that a couple of times, and it shakes you up. And so I don't know if... It looks like you need to shave the black topping and fill it in, and I don't know if that was going to be addressed eventually, or it's been out there for a while, so I just thought I'd bring that to Pat's attention. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor Grego. Counselor Daniels?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome, Mayor.
So first, I wanted to thank council for... Excuse me, at the last meeting, as I was out of town, so I appreciate that. I wanted to give an update that we held the TriStar basketball regional competition in Pueblo last weekend, and of the thirty-six kids who are going to the state competition, twenty-six of them are from the San Luis Valley, so that is a huge amount. We have a great representation there, and it's been fantastic. Also, there is another sequential intercept mapping meeting coming up on Friday, starting at nine AM, out at the Behavioral Health Group on the south end of town, and that's discussing people with criminal justice concerns who also have behavioral health or addictions issues, and how the community is going to work together to address them in a very collaborative way. On Friday, we'll be talking about the priorities as a community, and people are invited to attend that. And then I just wanted to say I'm so proud of our community, the things that we heard tonight, Adam State, Dr. McClure coming in and telling us where she's at, Liz and Mr. Heaton working on this economic impact study. Our local business is growing and wanting to expand and building new things, our ice rink coming in, our neighborhood watch, the banners. We do some amazing things, and I just want to say thank you to our community, and I'm really, really proud to be a member of Alamosa and all of the things that we have going on. So thank you for everything that's going on.
Great job, Counselor Daniels. Thank you. Councilman V. Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick update. This is for the public. I have received some calls and comments on the recycling hours and the green waste dump. The summer hours at the recycling center start on March twentieth, and green waste pickup starts today. Well, this was a couple of days ago, so we're back in motion on that.
Okay. Looks like no other comments except for me. I would like to thank the staff, also Heather, Holly, Eric, and everyone for your preparation and getting me prepared to step up here tonight and help out in this capacity. I couldn't have done it without your help and your support. Thank you so very much. I also would like to say this week I had an opportunity to go to the school board meeting with Counselor V. Hill, and it was great to see a lot of the amazing things that they're doing in our school system, especially the elementary school. I had an opportunity a couple of weeks ago, a few weeks ago, to, as a part of the Alamosa Literacy Council, to participate in some activities at the elementary school, and I see we have Principal McBe in here tonight. Thank you so very much for investing in those young students and making a difference in their lives. I also would like to thank all the people who came out and supported our Alamosa High School basketball team, who went to the state finals in Denver this past week. They finished second place, but they fought to the very end. I'm very proud of those young men. And I also would like to thank the Adam State University sports teams. Like every weekend, there's something going on at a field or a basketball, everywhere something's going on over there, so make sure you go out there and support our athletes. And let's just keep up the great things that we're doing in this community and the business owners who are continuing to grow your business. We wish you much success, and that's all I have for you all tonight.
Mayor, what another...
Yes, sir.
You're thanking all these teams. I think it's good to thank Sanford India. This is three straight row-to-row championships that they've gotten.
Thank you so very much, Counselor Grego.
That's a big... You know, it's three straight championships, back-to-back.
Three straight championships. But thank you. I'm glad you brought that up, and I appreciate that, bringing that to our attention. That just goes to show that council members like Counselor Grego, we're not only focused on what's going on in Alamosa, but we're also concerned what's going on throughout the San Luis Valley. So thank you so very much. Appreciate it. If there are no other comments...
Right here, right here.
Counselor V. Hill?
To add to Mr. Grego's comment, also congratulations to the Sangre de Cristo Girls basketball team for getting fourth place, I believe, at the state, and also the Centauri Girls basketball team for getting fourth at the state. You bet.
Thank you so very much, Counselor V. Hill. Are there any other comments? If not, meeting's adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.